...channel seventy-one and Tomcast channel twenty-five. Meetings can also be viewed live from the city's website, www.citycapitola.org. Our technician tonight is Ben Thompson. Despite being physically close to the public, participation is still possible. Public comments can be emailed to council for their attention. That should be planning commission for their attention during tonight's meeting. Identify the item you wish to comment on in your email subject line. Emails comments will be accepted starting now up until I announce the public comment for that item to close. Each emailed comment will be read aloud for up to three minutes or displayed on a screen. Each public comment period will mail them for three minutes period. Emails received by public comment at ci dot capitola dot ca dot us outside of the comments period outline will not be included in the record. Lastly, we want to thank you for your indulgence tonight as we adapt to the necessities of the moment. Next item is the roll call.
Commissioners Christensen.
Do we?
Ruth.
We can note for the record that everyone is present by zoom remote if we don't have anyone to do the roll call.
Oh, we can't, uh...
We have actually the roll call on our devices.
Yes, so...
So, everyone is present, the minutes could show. The next is the pledge of allegiance. So, I guess everyone turn their mute off so we can hear you. And, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Do you remember what it was? It was just in one nation, under God. It was a roll call. It was ready and just as strong as the scroll. That was not our best rendition, but it was... Next oral communication. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No additions or deletions to the agenda. However, I would like to suggest that item four C be moved to four B because our chair will have to recuse himself from item four B if that could be moved sixteen oh one forty-first Avenue to item four C.
Well, with that in mind then, will there be a director's report?
There will be a director's report.
Okay, so I'll remain for that then.
Okay.
All right. So, next is the opportunity for public comments. And this puts us in the, uh, our first opportunity to try out their most public comment system. So, we will need to take a short break to see if any public comments come in. So, we'll resume the meeting at seven oh seven.
Currently, we're taking public comment for anything not on the agenda. We, it looks like we do have a public comment for a future item.
So, you want to hold that until that item comes up?
Yes, we'll hold that until that item comes up.
Okay.
Again, we're doing public comment for anything not currently on the agenda. And we're running it for three minutes. We're two minutes in. And at this point, we have no items that have not been posted on the agenda in our public comment for email.
Okay, you got the other public comment. Any commissioners comment?
No comment from Commissioner Ruth.
No comment from Commissioner Wilk.
And Commissioner Christensen, I assume none?
Uh, no comment from Commissioner Christensen. I'm sorry, I was muted.
Okay. Okay. It takes us to item number three, the consent calendar. There's one item on the consent calendar, one one five San Jose Avenue. There are several commissioners who will not vote on this. Do we have, does anyone wish to remove this from the consent calendar? So, that includes members of the public. If any member of the public wishes to have the one one five San Jose Avenue item heard with a full hearing, they need to send him an email right now.
And that email can be sent to publiccomment@ci dot capitola dot ca dot us.
Is that screen still off? It's on mic.
It is.
Okay.
You can have video of this, you can have your video displayed on here. Oh, it is.
Oh, I think...
Okay. Seems unlikely we're going to get any, it's rarely get this anyway. And if someone should come in later, we'll reconsider the items. But, do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
So, move.
Commissioner Welch, do you approve the consent calendar?
Commissioner Ruth, seconds.
Okay, roll call vote please.
Commissioner Christensen.
Uh, do you want me to do the roll call, Katie?
I guess, I think we're having a problem with Liz's microphone, so that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Hey, Commissioner Christensen.
Hi.
Commissioner Ruth.
Hi.
Commissioner Wilk.
Wilk. Of Spain.
Yeah, okay. And Commissioner Welch, I got the two kind of melded.
Yes.
Okay, and, and the chair abstained, so that carries three to nothing, the two of the commissioners. Next item is the public hearing for fifteen fifteen Prospect Avenue. Staff report please.
Okay. Okay, good evening commissioners. This is Director Hurley and fifteen fifteen Prospect Avenue. Matt Planner Orbach has worked closely with the applicant on this application. He is available for questions at the end of the presentation, but due to the unique circumstances, I'll be doing the presentation this evening. So, the applicant is proposing a three hundred and sixty-seven square feet of first and second story additions to an existing one thousand four hundred and fifty-seven square foot two-story non-conforming single-family residence located at fifteen fifteen Prospect Avenue within the R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District. The existing residence at fifteen fifteen Prospect Avenue is a non-conforming two-story single-family residence. The lot is in the Jewel Box neighborhood and is surrounded by one and two-story single-family homes. Before you on the screen this evening is the existing site plan showing the single-family home footprint. And a large driveway in the front yard. The proposed site plan is shown on this slide. The existing residence is non-conforming because the second story encroaches into the required front and second story side setbacks, and the garage encroaches into the front setback. The applicant submitted the required eighty percent non-conforming calculation which demonstrates that the proposed alterations do not exceed the eighty percent of the present fair market value of the structure, so the alterations are permissible. Within this slide, you see the existing first and second story. Next, we'll move on to the proposed floor plan. The applicant is proposing six hundred and thirty-seven square feet of first and second story additions that include a master bedroom and an extensive remodel. The area in green is the new landscaping for the site. As seen in this slide, the second story additions, so a new staircase going up on the side and then two areas of the existing home will be removed to make, to ensure that the house stays within the maximum floor area. This slide shows the existing elevations. Next are the proposed elevations. The proposed remodel will utilize stucco siding on the first and second story with a Spanish tiled roof. The applicant is proposing several improvements within the public right-of-way, including new curb and gutter, depressed driveway approach, landscaping, and two permeable paver strips for one new off-street parking space. The Public Works Department has reviewed the plan and supports the proposed improvements with the issuance of a minor encroachment permit. The project complies with the zoning code for the R1 district. Staff has worked very closely through multiple revisions on this project, and this evening staff is recommending the planning commission approved project nineteen dash oh two six seven based on the conditions of approval and findings found in the staff report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the staff?
This is, this is Commissioner Welch. I have, I just have one question. I see that they changed their rear second story window to comply with the Arkansas site request that it be four feet off the ground. Is that anywhere in our code, or is that just something we're asking them to do because they had a flat roof? And if that's the case, is it something that we're going to try to enforce because of, because of them having a flat roof if it comes up on other homes?
So, this is something that's... Oh, go ahead, Matt.
I was just going to say, the precedent for this was set with five eleven Escalona, where there was a flat roof that an applicant was planning to use in the future of the deck when the zoning code is adopted by the planning, the coastal commission. So, this, that came up at Arkansas site and the applicant was willing to have the windows raised, so just to make sure that there wasn't roof backs up until that code is adopted and they're able to put in the deck up there.
Yeah, and, and I'm glad that the applicant was willing to comply with that. I guess, again, my concern is, one, it's not necessarily in our code, it's something that we've looked at, but if we look at, which is being a retired fire guy, I look at these escape routes for these folks. So, a typical fire in a two-story house happening in the kitchen is going to run up the staircase, which would block or impede their ability often to get to the front of the house, and that may be their viable option if they're going out. So, I just hate to unnecessarily make people change something based on what we perceive as could be a problem, as opposed to let them be an adult and then if they violate it, then we deal with it then. So, those are just my comments.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
I, I kind of wanted to second Chief Day's sentiment, this is Commissioner Christensen. Um, I, not only from an escape route perspective, but I felt, reading through the staff report, I felt it was a little, even with Escalona, I think that was the last project that they made, the windows, um, a little bit, the sill of the window higher, or at least Arkansas site requested that that be done. Um, I feel that if it's, if it's their design intention to have a larger window and it's not obviously a door, I don't see the reasoning for making people raise their sills, but it's, I mean, it's just a comment, but...
So, this is Commissioner Wilk. Can I chime in since no one's, I raised my hand and no one calls on me?
I can see your hand.
So, uh, I agree with the previous two comments, but my question for staff is, if, if we did not want to insist that they have the four-foot raised window, is the proper procedure to ask for a continuance so that we can get the applicant an opportunity to re-submit his drawings and if he so chooses, and then allow public comments, and then review this again at the next meeting?
I believe you did include in your motion the option for the applicant to return to the originally designed windows.
Yeah, I don't think we'd be doing the applicant any favor continuing that hearing.
Right.
Well, I, my concern is that, that if we change the, um, the ruling, that public comment doesn't get a chance to weigh in. In other words, there's now an opportunity that there might be a deck there and neighbors might complain, and we've kind of made this ruling without them getting a chance to complain.
And this is Commissioner Ruth. I think if the applicant is certainly agreeable to the planning commission's recommendation, that we should go along with that and not propose anything new that could delay the project for them.
That's fine.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Wilk makes a good point. It's, uh, it's not likely, but we don't know for sure, and it's, it's not a good practice to, uh, uh, change the application in a way that's more favorable for the applicant without people knowing that's going to happen. Okay, so, we should now open the public hearing on this. And once again, the public hearing will be by means of email, and we will allow three minutes for public comment. So, it will be reconvene at seven twenty-two.
And I'm monitoring public comment through a separate device. I'll, if we get public, I'll bring it up after the three minutes. We are receiving public comment from the applicant. The first public comment says, "I agree with the staff report," and that is from the applicant. The, that came in earlier. The second public comment, which was just received, um, says, "We do not want a continuance."
Also from the applicant, I assume?
That's from the applicant as well. Next, there's public comment from Anthony Ravey. Um, and the public comment says, "I feel the project would greatly improve the neighborhood. However, I would not want a rear deck to ever be added." And that is that public comment. And those are the three public comments regarding fifteen fifteen Prospect Avenue at this time.
Okay, we will close the public hearing, and we're going to have each of the commissioners provide input, if any, one by one. So, we'll start with Commissioner Christensen. We have to unmute.
Yep, I got it. Um, I, I mean, I, I wouldn't suggest having a continuance on this project by any means. I was just commenting, my previous comment was, was just to address the fact that I've seen two different projects having to raise windows that were previously, previously designed as larger windows, and I just thought that was kind of a, an overstep in my opinion, but that's all. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to continue this project.
Commissioner Ruth?
I believe the applicant has stated his desire not to change the plan and go along with the staff recommendation, so I would support that.
Commissioner Welch?
I agree, and I would just like to thank the applicant for investing in our community.
Commissioner Welch?
Um, I support the project and I appreciate, um, the neighbor and the applicant sharing their views, so I support. In fact, I would move that we approve fifteen fifteen Prospect Avenue, item nineteen oh two six seven.
Just for the record, I, I should have input, which is basically to agree with everyone, so. There's a motion. Do we have a second?
Christensen gave a second.
Who? That's Commissioner Christensen?
That's Christensen.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. The motion is to approve the application, and I don't have the number with me, but, uh...
Nine.
So, here it is. Project number nineteen dash oh two six seven, with the conditions of approval and findings as set forth in the staff report, all in favor, we're going to have to do a roll call. So, I'll, I'll do the roll call. Commissioner Christensen?
Hi.
Commissioner Ruth?
Hi.
Commissioner Wilk?
Hi.
Commissioner Welch?
Hi.
And chairman, yes, so that passes unanimously. So, the next item, why don't we just go in the order that they're on the agenda? So, I will be recusing myself from this due to proximity conflict, and I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Ruth.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Newman. Uh, this is item B, a public hearing for sixteen oh one forty-first Avenue, a signed permit for new wall signs for the New Outdoor Supply Hardware Company located in the CC Community Zoning District.
Thank you, Planning Commission. Um, the applicant is requesting two new wall signs for a business located at sixteen oh one forty-first Avenue in the Community Commercial Zoning District. The application requires, um, um, sorry, the application requires planning commission approval under the existing Master Sign Program. The New Outdoor Supply Hardware Store is one of the major commercial tenants within Kings Plaza Shopping Center. The site is located within Capitola's Forty-first Avenue Commercial Corridor. The multi-tenant building is near the corner of Capitola Road and Thirty-eighth Avenue. The site indicated, indicating the wall signs on the screen. Both signs face into Kings Plaza. So, the primary sign is facing Forty-first Avenue, and the second sign B is the nursery sign, which faces into Kings Plaza into the parking lot. Shown on the slide is the, um, front entry sign over the front entry, which is oriented towards Forty-first Avenue. And the sign B, the nursery sign, is facing into the parking lot at Kings Plaza. Kings Plaza is governed by a Master Sign Program. All signs that exceed seventy square feet require planning commission approval. The proposed sign A on the front of this building is eighty-five square feet and therefore requires planning commission approval. As shown on this slide, the proposed eighty-five square foot sign for sign A, there's a maximum limitation for sign A of a hundred square feet, so the proposed sign area is in compliance. The maximum sign height is in compliance, and I'll get into that in a moment. The maximum lettering height complies with a, um, a range of three to five and a half feet, and the maximum logo height also, there, there is no maximum logo on this one, so... The maximum sign height is five feet six inches under the Master Sign Program. Due to the unique shape of the design, staff measured the height as an average, which is less than five feet six inches. If planning commission does not agree with this methodology, the sign could be conditioned to not exceed five feet six inches in total height. I wanted to bring up that in the staff report, there was a typo, um, in paragraph two, that the OHS, in the OHS sign section stating that the average sign height is five feet two inches. The correct height are listed in the table at, um, the average sign height was five feet four and a half inches. The proposed tenant signs C, D, and E are located along Forty-first Avenue, Capitola Road, and Thirty-eighth Avenue. The signs comply with the Master Sign Program and would otherwise be approved administratively. Staff recommends the planning commission approved project twenty dash zero one zero five based on the conditions of approval and findings.
Thank you, Katie. Are there any comments or questions from the commission before we open the public hearing?
No comment from Commissioner Welch.
Commissioner Wilks?
Uh, no comment from Commissioner Wilk.
Commissioner Christensen?
No comment from Commissioner Christensen.
Okay, well, we will take three minutes for public comment. Katie, are you putting that address on the screen? There we go.
Yep.
So, if you'd like to comment on the item, you have three minutes to email. The site indicated, indicating the wall signs on the screen. Both signs face into Kings Plaza. So the primary sign is facing forty first Avenue, and the second sign B is the nursery sign, which faces into Kings Plaza into the parking lot. Shown on the slide of, is the, um, front entry sign over the front entry, which is oriented towards forty first Avenue. And the sign B, the nursery sign, is facing into the parking lot. At Kings Plaza. Kings Plaza is governed by a master sign program. All signs that exceed seventy square feet require Planning Commission approval. The proposed sign A on the front of this building is eighty five square feet and therefore requires Planning Commission approval. As shown on this slide, the proposed eighty five square foot sign for sign A, there's a maximum limitation for sign A of a hundred square feet. So the proposed sign area is in compliance. Um, the maximum sign height is in compliance, and I'll get into that in a moment. Um, the maximum lettering height complies with a, um, a range of three to five and a half feet. And the maximum logo height also, there, there is no maximum logo on this one, so. The maximum sign height is five feet six inches under the master sign program. Due to the unique shape of the design, staff measured the height as an average, which is less than five feet six inches. Um, if Planning Commission does not agree with this methodology, the sign could be conditioned to not exceed five feet six inches in total height. I wanted to bring up that in the staff report, there was a typo, um, in paragraph two, that the Osh, in the Osh sign section stating that the average sign height is five feet two inches. The correct height are listed in the table. At, um, the average sign height was five feet four and a half inches. The proposed tenant signs C, D, and E are located along forty first Avenue, Capitola Road, and thirty eighth Avenue. The signs comply with the master sign program and would otherwise be approved administratively. Staff recommends the Planning Commission approve project twenty dash zero one zero five based on the conditions of approval and findings.
Thank you, Katie. Are there any comments or questions from the commission before we open the public hearing?
No comment from Commissioner Wilk.
Commissioner Wilks?
Uh, no comment from Commissioner Wilk.
Commissioner Christensen?
No comment from Commissioner Christensen.
Okay, well, we will take three minutes for a public comment. Katie, are you putting that address on the screen? There we go. So if you'd like to comment on the item, you have three minutes to email publiccomment@ci dot capitola dot ca dot us.
Commissioner Ruth, I'm seeing no public comment. I'll open it just to share.
Okay, there's no public comments. Are there any comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Wilks?
No comment.
Commissioner Christensen?
No comment. I think it will be a, a nice sign, honestly.
It's nice to have that store back again. Commissioner Welch?
No comment.
Okay, with that, there's no comments on the, from the public. Uh, is there a motion to approve the application?
I motioned, um, to Commissioner Christensen, I have a motion to approve.
Uh, Commissioner Wilk seconds.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll do the roll call, and that includes all the conditions, I presume? Commissioner Wilks?
Uh, aye.
Commissioner Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Welch?
Aye.
And Commissioner Ruth votes aye. Okay, Chairman Newman, it's back to you.
Thank you. That takes us to the, uh, third and last public hearing, which is eighteen fifty forty first Avenue. Um. And that is, we have the application number here. Conditional use permit amendment for retail cannabis establishment in the Community Commercial Zoning District. Staff report please.
Okay. Uh, good evening, Commissioners, and before you is a amendment to a conditional use permit for a retail cannabis establishment at eighteen fifty forty first Avenue. This first slide shows the history of the project, um, from the time it was selected as a potential retail cannabis license. Then following that, there was an appeal, so the effective date for starting the license was August second, twenty nineteen. Um, the applicant came to Planning Commission on October third and was granted a CUP. Um, following that, they had a, a deadline of February second in which to get their other licenses in place. There's the CUP, the conditional use permit, as well as the state license. Um, the, the applicant applied for a state license on November twenty fifth, twenty nineteen. Their application wa- they received confirmation that it was received on December seventeenth. On January thirtieth, the applicant was informed by the BCC that they were not going to issue them the license without the co- the construction being completed on the building, which was problematic. This applicant, um, uh, is, is currently taking over a building in which there is an existing lease, so the construction could not be completed by February. Um, as they're not planning in, to move in until, um, the upcoming months. Um, so with that, on January thirteenth, the applicant, well, the applicant was in touch with the city following the news on the thirtieth. And after working through the legalities of it, on March thirteenth, um, we directed the applicant to apply for an amendment to the condition. Amending this condition is not outside the realm of what's allowed within a, the cannabis license, um, as outlined in the staff report. So the applicant is requesting that condition number sixteen be amended, um, so that the permit shall expire. And actually, we received a letter this past week, and due to the current can, um, very unique circumstances of our sheltering in place. Originally, their request was for May second, twenty twenty, but should any unforeseeable, um, hurdles come their way during, uh, this, this time, they just simply need to pay for their permit, I, is what I understand. Um, they're asking that this be extended the full six months from the February second date, which would, um, be extended to August third, twenty twenty. And staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the amendment to the conditional use permit based, uh, with the amended condition, including extending the permit until August third, twenty twenty, in line with the findings and condition, and amended conditions in the staff report and presentation. Thank you.
Any questions of staff?
Uh, Commissioner Ruth, I have one. Uh, do we know what their anticipated opening date is?
I, at, at this point, I, I know that they, as soon as they, um, get occupancy of the site, they want to begin work. And we'll have to do a review under, um, this, the closure of how much work can be done immediately. I, I do understand that under the previous order, cannabis was an essential service, was listed as essential service. So we'll be doing a review of that at the time that the building permit will be issued, um, and working closely with them. But my understanding is from the time that they get occupancy of the building, they would like to start working, so.
So it won't be prior to the August third date?
They were hoping to get occupancy, I, I believe, in, uh, sooner than the August third date.
So are they allowed to, to do that under the provisional license, or?
Yes.
Not having the actual license from the state, and there's, there's no liability for the city in allowing them to do that?
No, they could move forward with their building permit.
Okay, thank you, Katie.
Yes.
Any other questions? If not, uh, we will open the public hearing and allow three minutes for emails. We'll resume at seven forty three.
There is a, a public comment that has been received from the applicant, and I'll take this time while the public can continue to send in messages. Um, and the public comment states, dear Commissioners, thank you for your time this evening. The Apothecarium team is extremely thankful for the time and work you've provided thus far. We look forward to opening our retail location and serving the citizens of the City of Capitola and surrounding areas. We would also like to thank staff who worked on creating this report and its recommendations. We reviewed the staff report and support its recommendations with the modification that condition of approval number sixteen of conditional use permit nineteen dash zero four zero eight be extended to six months from the original expiration date to August second, twenty twenty, or the next business day. As the record indicates, the process through which we worked with the Bureau of Cannabis Control, or BBC, to receive approval of licensure took an unusual amount of time and resources. As with any new department, the BBC was developing its processes, which resulted in changing expectations and requirements. During that time, we worked diligently with the BBC to address any concerns over the application process, oftentimes resulting in several follow-up emails or calls to ensure requested documents were received or questions were answered. Simultaneously, we worked tirelessly with city representatives to maintain momentum full, towards full licensure while recognizing certain local hurdles. The BBC approved our license on March thirteenth. Now, we face additional uncertainties in the finalization of our state licensure. The current COVID nineteen crisis in our community seemed unimaginable a mere three weeks ago. We initially requested a three-month extension of condition sixteen through May second, twenty twenty, believing that it would be sufficient to finalize payment and processing of our state license. However, three days after the letter was submitted, the Bay Area issued the first shelter-in-place order. These new orders, while extremely justified, have resulted in additional delays in our ability to move our project forward and ensure we receive our license from the BCC, even if we were to issue the payment for the license tomorrow. Therefore, we respectfully request that the extension be made for a term of six months from the original expiration date to Monday, August third, twenty twenty. Because we are uncertain when the BBC, BCC will be able to process our payment for the license, which may have adverse effects on the stipulations of our project with the city, we feel this request is reasonable. A six-month extension will allow us the time to understand the BBC's, um, capabilities to process payment and then grant us our license. Additionally, we feel this request for extension is in the best interest of both parties, so we do not have to request an additional extension should additional ex- unexpected circumstances arise. Accordingly, and for all the reasons stated above, we support the recommendation of the staff with the edits to extend condition sixteen through August second, twenty twenty. Thank you for your time and consideration. Yanez Carrasco.
And that is the only public comment?
I'm checking right now to ensure that. Yes, that is the only public comment for this item.
Well, there's, there's the end date of August second and the end date of August third have been mentioned, that's just, that's a big difference, that's. That's a big one of those.
Yeah, February is.
Okay. Okay, well, whoever makes the motion can take that into account, but, um, we'll close the public hearing and. You see what I'm talking about? Close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners. Uh, let's, uh, change the order around a little bit. Uh, Commissioner Welch?
No comment.
Okay, Commissioner Ruth?
No comment.
Commissioner Christensen?
Uh, no comment. I, uh, I, I, I think that supporting what they are requesting seems reasonable.
Commissioner Welch?
So I, uh, kind of feel bad for the applicant for all the red tape that the state and the city has put them through. And like the left, the left, rest of commissioners know that I asked staff if there's any way we could give them relief on their reapplication fee, uh, because of all the red tape that, the, the city didn't necessarily put them through, but the state, state certainly did. And apparently, legal said, well, no, the commission can't do that because effectively that's tapping into the general fund. But of course, the city council could, so, um, I guess we don't want to go there. But I, I, I do, I just want to express my, uh, sympathy to the applicant for all the red tape they had to go through, and, and I hope they're, maintain their enthusiasm for this project. That's all.
Myself, uh, it's very unfortunate that, that this is the time when we really need them in this period of great stress. So, uh, too bad they had to get delayed, but do we have a motion?
Move approval with the amendment to the condition.
Commissioner Wilk seconds.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the amendment to the conditional use permit to extend it to August two, twenty twenty, based on the conditions, uh, set forth in the staff report and findings. And roll call, we'll.
Excuse me, Chair.
I will do that again. Commissioner Ruth?
Chair Newman?
Aye.
So you want to do it?
I, I, I just wanted to comment before the roll call that, I think these are unique circumstances, and typically I wouldn't add comment after the public hearing is closed, but another email did come in in support from Roger Shaheen. And I, I'd like to read it, it's just a few sentences, just so it's on the record. Um, I have no issue with this. It sounds like, I'm sorry, it, it sounds like they have done a very reasonable job throughout their permit process. I would give them the extension time due to the circumstances today. Good luck, Roger Shaheen. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Uh, I'll add that to the record, and I think, uh, we're at Commissioner, uh, Wilk?
Aye.
Commissioner Christensen?
Aye.
Commissioner Welch?
Aye.
And the chair will vote aye, so that passes unanimously. And next item is the director's report.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. Um, first, I'd really like to thank you this evening for being so flexible during this uncertain time. Um, and I wanted to give you an update on our department and how we are dealing with the current shelter-in-place. Um, so as you all know, on March sixteenth, there was an order to shelter in place for the County of Santa Cruz. And this was recently extended on March thirty first, um, and updated with more specificity than the original order. Okay, so within the planning division, we have, within the shelter-in-place, actually, there's direction that even within your essential services, if you have staff that can work at home, um, can work remotely, that is what is advised. So currently, within our planning division, we've got two staff members, and they're both working remotely from home. Um, we have updated our system that they're available for any questions, the best route in which to, for the public to be in touch with our planners. And this is very clear on our website. If you go to community development, there is very clear directions that you should email planning at ci dot capitola dot ca dot us. You can also call our main number. And the phone calls are placed to planners' voicemails, in which they will, uh, return the call, hopefully by end of day, but definitely within twenty-four hours. Um, all existing applications that we have in process will be, continue to be processed. New applications now require electronic submittal, which I think is a relief for some of our, um, applicants in the past that have had to drive over the hill to drop off. applicants in the past that have had to drive over the hill to drop off plans and, so we're now taking in applications electronically. We're following up with invoices and then payment currently is by check, but we're updating that system as well to be able to take in electronic payment. New applications, once, and old ones, they go through the, we'll take them through the process with planning commission, or if it's an administrative process, we'll take them through the process to the point that we'll issue entitlements. Construction for any use is subject to the order that's in place now, so we'll review each application and depending on what type of application is, if it were a home occupation, we could approve that administratively. If it's an application for a new development, we'd have to look at the type of development and whether or not it's under the order. If it was an affordable housing development, that could proceed right now under the order and be developed with, um, construction. One, um, part of the new order that came out is specific to vacation rentals, and I wanted to take a moment to go over that so that we get, uh, this came out today. Clear direction. So vacation rentals, including those rented through Airbnb, V R B O, and other platforms, are not allowed to operate as such under the revised order. Under the order, only essential businesses are allowed to operate and travel is prohibited unless for essential services or purposes as defined in the order. These locations may not be used for non-essential leisure travel. Vacation rentals are not an essential business as defined in the order, but they may be allowed to continue operations under certain circumstances related to essential services, such as, the first is providing housing for traveling emergency and public safety personnel, providing housing for traveling medical personnel, providing housing for other essential workers, and providing housing for families attending to critical medical needs of local relatives. More specifically, vacation rentals should not be used by their owners to shelter in place if they have to leave another county to come to their vacation rental. All vacation rental bookings not currently in effect should be canceled through May third twenty twenty. Current vacation rental occupants are encouraged to return home unless they have no other place to go or are unable to safely travel. So this is just out from the county today. I'll be updating the, our website tomorrow with all of this information. We're also taking a further step and, um, Planner Susanto has been putting together, uh, letters that will have, for each property owner that owns a vacation rental, they'll receive that. So we're notifying each owner and letting them know of this change. Within our building division, um, this has been, there's been major shifts from the first order to the second. Under the first order, housing could continue for development. The new order is very specific that only affordable housing projects can continue. And then, I'm just going to quickly go through the list of what's allowed in terms of construction. So projects immediately necessary to the maintenance, operation, or repair of essential infrastructure, projects associated with healthcare operations, including creating or expanding healthcare operations, affordable housing that is or will be income restricted, including multi-unit, mixed unit developments, public works projects, if specifically designated as a central government function by the lead government agency, shelters and temporary housing, but not including hotels and, or motels, projects immediately necessary to provide critical non-commercial services to individuals experiencing homelessness, elderly persons, persons who are economically disadvantaged, and persons with special needs, construction necessary to ensure that the existing construction sites that must be shut down under this order are left in a safe and secure manner, but only to the extent necessary to do so. And construction or repair necessary to ensure that residents and buildings contain essential businesses are safe, sanitary, and habitable to the extent such construction or repair cannot reasonably be delayed. So these last two are the, um, our building division is actually going through all current permits that we have and figuring out where they are in the development process. We don't have any affordable housing developments happening right now. There's the Terra, Terra Court project that just finished with one unit that's actually on the market currently. But, but that has gotten its certificate of occupancies, so basically all the construction that is out there, um, for, commercial and for the development of homes are going to have to shut down once they're found to be safe. Um, and under those last two bullets. So we're, our building official and building inspector today spent the whole day just going through the list of current projects and deciding how each one has to be reviewed individually to see what the next steps are in order to ensure safety. And to make sure that if any home, that if, if they've got a kitchen that's not working or any plumbing issues, any of that, we've got to, you know, maintain that buildings are safe and habitable. So, um, just a couple of the questions that we've had coming in, I thought I'd present in case we have any folks out there watching. So if, if I have a contractor scheduled to begin a remodel next week, can I go ahead with this project? And the answer to that would be you must defer your remodel or renovation project unless it is necessary to restore your home to a safe, sanitary, and habitable space and cannot reasonably be delayed. I am midway through a remodel. Can my construction project continue? Residential remodeling projects that are partly completed can continue if delaying the completion would pose a safety, security, or sanitation risk to residents or impact the habitability of the residents. Otherwise, they must be deferred. And lastly, question would be, I have a construction project that will sustain damage if I do not continue to work on it. Can I complete the project if it is not related to provisions of healthcare, housing, or essential infrastructure? And the answer to that is yes, you can perform the work on the site, but only to ensure it's, it is safe and secure while it is shut down in compliance with this order. This includes sending employees to the contr- construction site to secure the site and ensure it does not sustain damage. You can continue construction on the project only if this, if strictly necessary to prevent damage to the project, like completing a roof or ensuring that there's proper drainage after grading has been completed. So with that, that's, those are the most common questions that were being asked, and again, we're looking at each permit that we have issued individually. I also want to say that we, we do have quite a few building applications in the process, which we're going to continue to process. And we'll be holding off on issuing the permit until the order is lifted. But, um, a- as permits come in, we'll continue to work on them and be ready to issue them as soon as the order is lifted. So with that, that concludes my director's report, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And I thank the public for their patience during this time.
Commissioner Ruth has a question?
Yes.
Please.
Yeah. Katie, are there any provisions for enforcement, uh, if people use their second homes, their vacation homes over here to shelter in place instead of their, uh, principal residence?
There are, there's specific, um, follow-up that the, for enforcement. So we will be.
How would that be enforced? Would that be on a complaint-by-complaint basis?
It would be on a complaint basis.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Regarding the director's report, if not, the next item is the commission's comment. Anyone? Let me go one by one. Commissioner Christensen?
No comment.
Commissioner Welch?
No comment.
Commissioner Welch?
No comment.
Commissioner Ruth?
Stay safe, everyone.
Thanks, myself. I'd like to, uh, commend the community development department and the community development director for jumping down this unusual circumstance and getting us ramped up so quickly and so efficiently. It's, uh, really took a lot of effort and, uh, it paid off, so thank you.
You're welcome.
And with that, we will probably be doing this again at the next meeting in May. So, uh, we'll adjourn until then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Goodbye.